Yeah. Didn't you see that?
No, I didn't see it. It's on the agenda.
It's right here.
Okay.
It has been.
Very smart.
Okay. It is 7:03 and I call the June 3 planning board meeting to order. First, on the agenda, approval of the minutes.
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of May 3, 2014.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes. Does anybody have any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. And by the way, at this point, I wish to welcome our newest member here, Ken Maderas. He's not new to the board. He served on it before, and I welcome him back to the board.
Welcome, Ken.
We move on to approval not required plans. These are plans received between May 14 and June 3. First, the applicant is Lawrence K. Swift to combine two lots into one lot at Seapet Road, East Falmouth.
Yes, we recommend it was Tom Bunker prepared and signed this plan. As it says in the application, this is to combine two existing lots, one vacant, one with a house and a garage into one buildable lot.
Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Bunker? About the plan? Okay. If there are no questions, could I have a motion?
So moved to.
Endorse.
Endorse.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to endorse this plan as it is. There are no further comments or questions. All in favor?
I just wanted to the staff.
No, there are none on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. The second one is GJC Realty Trust to create eight lots from one lot, Carriage Shop and Hayway Road, East Falmouth, for the applicant.
Thought I'd put up here with a little color on it to explain. I like to look at it this way, where there's a large area in the middle. We do all the required frontage, minimum 50 feet wide, lot width. It looks a little convoluted the whole way, but if you look at this green area is going to be protected, no structures, no clearing, no hunting anything. This area here, we have three buildable portions on this side and five along Hayway Road, which I think frankly has supposedly 60% open space protected, which is more than required in a cluster subdivision plan. I think it's a good plan for the area. The size and the direction of the position of the lots along the road will, it's the same as the fabric of the neighborhood that's there already.
Do any of the board members have any questions of Mr. Bunker?
Just to be clear, the outlined hash mock area is not going to be built on?
That's correct. The condition is over.
No, this whole area.
This whole area.
Yes.
So why are the property lines on this?
Ask them.
I'm curious, Mr. Bunker, do these property lines show access to specific areas? Are they owned by the property owners?
They're owned, but it's restricted. There are requirements for a lot area, and more importantly, the minimum lot width, which are these circles here. So each lot has to contain, has to be able to fit one of these circles onto it without being less than 50 feet wide at any point. So it's to meet the requirements, but it's all protected in the back.
Any other questions? Yes, Doug.
So what's the zoning in this area?
It's AGA, 45,000.
So essentially, we're going to have what looks like small lots on big lots, but I guess that's the design you choose.
It'll look like eight small lots, you know, take a four and a half acre or something, and there's six acres of open space behind them.
Anybody else have any questions? I think it's good to get our questions satisfied, but I would remind you that Massachusetts is the only state in the nation that has an ANR. All you have to do is have the required frontage on a road. So we have these come before us, but... Anybody else have questions?
I do.
Yes, Jim.
They also have to have the required area, but that's because we're allowing them with clusters because they're giving this, if they divided this amongst them, they could do it, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that's basically it. We're allowing them to put a little bit smaller lots because the minimum lot size in this district is, what is it?
It's 45,000.
45,000. So they're all meeting the minimum anyway?
Yes.
Okay, so it's really not, they're not really taking advantage of a cluster or anything? They're just, okay.
The town actually, from my viewpoint, gets an advantage because of all this nice green space in here.
Right.
That is restricted.
And they're not putting a road or making a subdivision or doing a 40B or...
So although it looks quite convoluted, it, as I said...
So all the lots meet, all the frontage, 100-foot circle, minimum width, they meet everything anyway.
They meet everything.
That's why it's an approval not required.
Correct.
We have nothing to give them.
Correct. Yes, Doug.
Just a curious question. Does this then count towards the town's open space?
No, it wouldn't. Because it's private property.
Okay. Okay, that's all my questions. Next.
Yes, Ralph.
Yes, Mr. Bunker. So lots 1, 2, and 3 can be built on.
They can?
Can.
Yes.
Okay.
Right, I know. I know the others can. But the open space took portions of lots 1, 2, and 3. I see, I see. This is...
Okay. Okay. Then...
Somebody had fun with a GIS map.
Could I have a motion to endorse this plan?
I'll move that.
Okay. Is there a second, please?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we endorse the plan as it is. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Okay. Okay. Yeah, it's convoluted, but... We have another ANR, the third ANR tonight. The applicant is Benjamin Metzakappa to reconfigure two lots by exchanging equal areas of land, Caitlin Hills Drive, West Falmouth.
Yes, again, Tom Bunker. Because of the orientation of the house on Lot 14, Swing Pool got built off to one side, and so the two neighbors here made an agreement to swap land, equal areas. They stay the same size as what they are, but it's more conforms to what's built out there now.
Okay. We've done this many times, doesn't it? Yes, Jim.
I move to endorse.
Okay, Jim moves to endorse. Ken seconds. Any questions, comments?
I just have one.
Yes.
How old is this one pool? Was just recently constructed?
It's fairly new. I'm not quite sure, but maybe last year.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Okay. We've been asked to take CGM Development out of order. It's a very short one.
I'd like to move that we take CGM Development Site Plan Review out of order at this time.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Okay. Now, is there something new that you wish to present to us?
Not really. It's pretty much administrative. I noticed you had the decision on the agenda.
Right.
This is Dan Ojala from Downcape Engineering.
Oh, could you please?
You just did.
Please give your name.
Absolutely. Dan Ojala from Downcape Engineering. Here, Chris Meegan is in the office, in the audience rather, as well as Mike Hilsinger from Conser, if there's any questions on the building side. Very straightforward matter. We had emailed this over last week. We had requested a bike rack for traffic mitigation, and we cleaned up the landscaping by showing some of those dunes plantings on the east side of the building. And so those were really the two details that we had on there. Engineering had us add six inches to the stone in the leaching field, so we did that. So just a couple of housekeeping items. The landscaping plan, which I handed out, has all those items on it. I've got a full paper sets if you need them. So that was a pretty straightforward little change of use. Again, we're looking for the decision on the approval through site plan review and the waiver on the septic, being that the septic flow is going down. So we sure would appreciate those findings. I do glad to answer any questions.
We have a decision here. Who would like to read that?
Just as you can do, I mean, I brought up the bike path as a pack for discussion. At the meeting, I had a feeling some of the other board members thought it was unnecessary. I don't really need to have it if the board...
First, let's keep the decision on the floor, and then we can discuss it.
Okay.
So who wants to read the decision? You don't? There you go.
Draft, May 29, 2014. Motion that the planning vote to approve the application of CJM Development LLC under Article 39 Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaw for a plan entitled Site Plan 707 T-Ticket Highway, Falmouth, Mass., prepared for On the Water Media Group. CJM Development LLC prepared by Downcape Engineering, Inc., dated April 24, 2014. Scale 1 inch equals 20 feet, along with a landscape plan also prepared by Downcape Engineering, dated May 12, 2014, with the following findings and conditions. Findings: The applicant proposes to construct a retail and office building with the associated parking, drainage, and landscaping. Parking is located behind the building, and the drainage design is adequate for the engineering division's referral date of May 7, 2014. The curb cut is located off T-Ticket Highway, and a curb opening permit shall be required by Mass DOT per condition number 2 below. The site is served by town water, and the daily wastewater flow is being reduced from the current residential use. Therefore, no nitrogen mitigation is required. The board finds that the provision of a bike rack per condition number 3 below shall be adequate to mitigate any potential traffic impacts. Conditions: The plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary pursuant to Section 240-183B of the zoning bylaw. No permit of full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of its approval and predecessor approvals have been met. Two: Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall provide the board with a copy of the curb opening permit from Mass DOT for the entrance on T-Ticket Highway. Three: Prior to occupancy, the applicant shall install a bike rack on the property.
Point of warning, Madam Chairman, after the date of the plan revised, May 29, 2014...
What was that?
Revised.
Revised, May 29, 2014.
Okay. So it was revised on May 29, 2014.
Okay. I have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. And questions? Comments?
Mr. Holler? I just had a question. The finding is that the wastewater flow is being reduced. Could you just explain that, please?
Sure. The site is currently a four-bedroom home, and so that's a 440 gallon per day design flow, fairly good, healthy design flow. And with the office and retail components, it has broken down on the site plan, it's going down to 300 and change gallons per day, the Title V estimated design flow. So that's one of the criteria that you need to make the finding. So that was the basis for it. The septic flow is going down on the site, and so that is the facts.
We discussed that previously, but I want to emphasize that.
Yeah, yeah, it is important that had that grandfathered flow of 440, correct?
Any other questions, additions to the decision? Okay. It has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Okay. A motion now to go back? You're welcome. Any motion to go back now to the regular agenda?
Madam Chairman, I move that we go back to the original agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Okay. A motion now to go back? You're welcome. Any motion to go back now to the regular agenda?
Madam Chairman, I move that we go back to the original agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Okay. Now, the next one is a continuation of the public hearing. The applicant, Nathan Ellis Highway LLC, for a special permit modification to update the equipment list, expand hours of operation, and allow outside parking of vehicles accessory to the primary use of the contractor's yard located at 210 Nathan S. Ellis Highway, East Falmouth.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. For the record, my name is Jeff Oppenheim. I'm an attorney here in Falmouth, representing this evening Nathan Ellis Highway LLC, which owns the real estate on Route 151. This is a continued hearing from two weeks ago. There were several questions raised at that hearing, and I will answer those questions raised, and then several others that were raised last week by the town planner, which I will also address. But first, the questions raised by the planning board two weeks ago. Actually, before I get to that, I want to correct the statement I made two weeks ago where I said there was no net gain in the number of vehicles in our petition. There is, in fact, three vehicles being added to the list, one 35-ton low bed trailer to move equipment, and one roll-off trailer, and one dumpster delivery trailer. I'd like to correct that for the record. Second inquiry was in the area of how does this plan differ from the plan that was presented to this board in 2002 and that was approved in the context of a special permit issued by the board some 12 years ago? I reviewed both plans, and the list that I came up with is as follows. There are two areas designated for temporary structures in the winter months to protect snow plowing vehicles. One of them is here, and the other one is located right here. And those are made of cement blocks with hoop-like structures over the top which accept plastic sheathing. There's an area dedicated to a cell tower, which is right in this area, which permitted by the Cape Cod Commission and by our Zoning Board of Appeals. And there's an area for stockpiling boulders on the very eastern edge of the property, right over here. There's also an empty dumpster storage area on the north and south side of the property, which was not in the 2002 plan, and a temporary parking area on the northern perimeter, which existed in 2002 but was not labeled on that plan. So those are the changes or the differences in the plans. One of the members of the board asked about to have clarification on the hours of operation. Our petition is asking for unlimited hours, but I would like to clarify that. Right now, we have a permit to operate between 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM. And so we're looking to be able to come and go from the site between the hours of 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM without loading or unloading operations, but just to be able to leave and go from our site, which is on a state highway, onto the state highway, and from there to sites where we might be required to move our equipment. Our clients in the excavating business, and some of the contracts are off Cape, and it's necessary to bring the equipment some distance and be prepared to start work in the early morning hours. The vehicles do not pass through any residential neighborhoods when they do this. They go out into the state highway, and typically from Route 151 on to Route 28, heading north. These are our community's main transportation corridors and are open for public transit. Those were the questions raised by the board two weeks ago, and then last week, there were a few additional questions raised, which the town planner relayed to me. The first one was encroachment on state land. The property to the north is owned by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. There is a major utility easement evidenced by these dotted lines over here. There was some concern that there was encroachment in the area by the easement. My client does not use that property beyond his lot line. There is a fair amount of traffic in that easement, though. There's people using bikes, motorized and otherwise. The utility company patrols that area by helicopter monthly, taking photographs to make sure no one is utilizing their easement or in the easement area. And the state also, from time to time, comes down and, you know, makes sure that no one is utilizing their property. The state came and did a site visit as a result of a call made by a citizen in the community, Maureen Harlow-Hawks, and we have not heard from the state. We invited them to, you know, go through our property and walk to make sure that they were satisfied that we were not utilizing any state land. We have no problems with the condition that says that all of our activities are to be contained within the site. That's what we do, and that's what we would continue to do in the future. We were asked who the tenants are at the property. The tenants are Cabosa Excavating Company, Inc., and Cabosa Disposal, Inc. We were also asked what the nature of the repairs that were going on in the garage facility here, and those are routine repairs to keep the vehicles operational. There's also repair of the metal dumpsters and repainting of the dumpsters that goes on in that building. You will recall that the planning board permitted, in the northern 40% of the building, Cape Cod fabrication companies use of that end of the building to make metal, anything metal fabrication. Now, they're no longer tenants of ours. They moved from that building to larger quarters in the industrial park, and then they've since gone out of business. So, you know, we continue to do metal fabrication in that. We continue to repair things that are metal to our dumpsters. There was some concern raised about the fall zone of the cell tower, which is located right here. That was vetted rather comprehensively by the Cape Cod Commission and by the Zoning Board of Appeals before the permit was granted in 2003. I'd be happy to share a copy of that permit with you. The tower is designed to fold onto itself in an emergency or in an event of failure of the tower. So it doesn't fall as one piece. It has the ability to fold into three pieces, I believe. The activities that go on in the area within the fall zone are primarily storage of equipment and vehicles. It's outside the zone of, well, the fall zone does not include the building. I think that's critical for the board to know. And lastly, we were asked to assure the board that no retail sales would take place at the premises, and certainly, we, the permit or the amendment to the permit could be conditioned to include that. Be happy to take any questions you might have.
Questions? Yes, Paula.
Mr. Oppenheim, I have just two questions, basically. One is, boulder storage is shown on the property of the easement. Is that correct? You mentioned there was nothing under that easement, but this drawing shows boulder stockpile half of it on the easement.
That's correct. So we cannot impinge on their use of the easement. This is a major, I think, 200-foot-wide utility easement, and the concern of the utility company is primarily, is anything interfering with their towers? Is there anything interfering with their access to their towers? And the answer to both of those questions is no. The towers are not on the fringe, and we actually provide access to the utility company through our site to get into their easement area and to service their easement. And they routinely, you know, cut it like they have been doing throughout the town. We've probably, everyone has noticed that, they come through and take everything down.
But you did mention that they take helicopters to site.
Every month.
See what's there in there, but the boulder is on the easement.
They have not made, they apparently do not consider that a concern. The boulders also, they come and go depending upon the project. They're used primarily for retaining walls and ripraps and things like that.
The other question I had was hours of operation.
Yes.
I understand you're going to have 24-hour operation, but you are limiting the amount of activity that could be done during that...
That's correct.
...period. How do you, how do you control and maintain that?
There was some concern raised about the fall zone of the cell tower, which is located right here. That was vetted rather comprehensively, comprehensively by the Cape Cod Commission and by the zoning board of appeals before the permit was granted in 2003. I'd be happy to share a copy of that permit with you. The tower is designed to fold onto itself in an emergency or in an event of failure of the tower. So it doesn't fall as one piece. It has the ability to fold into three pieces, I believe. The activities that go on in the area within the fall zone are primarily storage of equipment and vehicles. It's outside the zone of, well, the fall zone does not include the building. I think that's critical for the board to know. And lastly, we were asked to assure the board that no retail sales would take place at the premises and certainly we, the permit or the amendment to the permit could be conditioned to include that. They're happy to take any questions you might have.
Questions? Yes, Paula.
Mr. Oppenheimer, I have just two questions, basically. One is, boulder storage is shown on the property of the easement. Is that correct? You mentioned there was nothing under that easement, but this drawing shows boulder stockpiled half of it on the easement.
Right. No? That's correct. So we cannot impinge on their use of the easement. This is a major, I think, 200-foot-wide utility easement. And the concern of the utility company is primarily is anything interfering with their towers? Is there anything interfering with their, their access to their towers? And the answer to both of those questions is no. The towers are not on the fringe and we actually provide access to the utility company through our site to get into their easement area and to service their easement. And they routinely, you know, cut it like they have been doing throughout the town with probably, everyone has noticed that, they come through and take everything down.
But you did mention that they take helicopters to site.
Every month.
To see what's there and there, but the boulder is on the easement.
They have not made, they apparently do not consider that a concern. The boulders also, they come and go depending upon the project. They're used primarily for retaining walls and ripraps and things like that.
The other question I had was hours of operation.
Yes.
I understand you're going to have 24-hour operation, but you are limiting the amount of activity that could be done during that.
That's correct.
Evening period. How do you, how do you control that, maintain that? It is an access state highway.
Right.
If you go in and load and go, who's going to even know?
Well.
I mean, is this going to be a condition of your?
Yes, I'm, we accept that as a condition. So if we're going to go out early in the morning, the vehicles will be loaded and ready to go the evening before and will be, the drivers will start them up, do a safety check, which they're required to do, and depart from the site.
There's a dumpster near my house and Tuesday morning at 7 o'clock they're unloading. Every Tuesday I can set my watch by it, so I know they have to go, leave before 7:00 to get there. So there is some activity going on before that.
The activities that the board is permitting on this site are the activities of Cabosa Excavating Company and Cabosa Disposal Company as it relates to construction and demolition debris. Okay, which is what you permitted in 2002.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, sorry.
Can you explain to me why I'm looking at the original 1998 thing, permit that says hours of operation, 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. and then there's references to 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.? What's the discrepancy there?
I think the discrepancy is that there was an intervening modification of the permit, Mr. Herbst, in 2002. And I'm quite certain that that permit allows operation from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. with the exception of emergency access for snow removal.
Okay.
You know, when we're called out, you know, during the night.
Right, okay. I think, I'm sorry, I had forgotten that, but I think you did mention that the first time you spoke to us several weeks ago. Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Excellent.
Okay, I have a couple. Does this drawing here represent the actual conditions, what's on site now?
Yes, I believe so. This was done by a registered land surveyor in our community, Jack Landers-Collie. It represents the conditions as of the date of the plan.
Okay. Can you tell me how many empty dumpsters there are stored on the property?
I can't. And I would say to you that the number fluctuates on a day-to-day basis. The dumpsters are not making my client any money when they're being stored at the property, Madam Chairman. It's when they're in the field that, you know, we earn a fee for picking them up and taking them to the appropriate site to be dumped.
And I'll go to the public now. And if you have any, because there have been some corrections here tonight, are there further comments on what has been presented tonight? Yes.
Madam Chair, planning board members, Maureen Harlow-Hocks, West Falmouth Highway. I just had a question. He clarified most of them and that was nice. The only one is, is how are you going to be able to, if it's unlimited, it's only for tractor trailers to go in and out? And there's already been violations, which sort of has exacerbated this whole new amendment. How do you tell if they're tractor trailers with C and D, which is, you know, for demolition, which is going to be allowed in this special permit? Or is it rubbish? I mean, do, how do you police it? I know it's, it's a great intent, but when it comes down to finding the time and the energy unless it, you know, gets a complaint and then it, you know, snowballs again. I just think that when you condition things that you can't really police and enforce it, it's sort of a hollow amendment. I mean, it's great for the owner because nobody's going to be watching him. The other thing, I'm glad he cleared up the 6:00 to 9:00 because my May 2002 said it was from 6:00 to 8:00. And so it is definitely 6:00 to 9:00 now. So that was cleared. And the other question is, we do have an ordinance in town for trash hauling already, which is 7:00 to 7:00, that you can only haul trash. And unless it's under, you know, health and welfare, you know, hurricane, you know, whatever, then you can do it all the time. Again, I'm not against any of the project there. I think he does a nice job. The landscaping's beautiful. Most people don't even know it's there and it's always kept up really nice. I just think that the 24-hour operation is a very excessive special permit on agriculturally-zoned property. Even though it's on a highway, it's still agricultural-zoned area in the town of Falmouth that will have an awful lot of truck traffic. And the dumpsters now, believe me, I live next to a dumpster too, Mr. Dryer, and when it was 3:00 in the morning and actually you called Carl, he was good, then it, you know, stopped doing it for a while and, you know, you'd have to keep after them. But they have so many dumpsters, they have to haul certain times of the day. I mean, they, they just can't do it between 7:00 and 7:00. There's just not enough time for all the dumpsters he has. I just hope that this doesn't open up the floodgates that these, you know, how we're going to tell between rubbish and C and D going in and out of his yard. I think that's a burden on Mr. Cabosa that's kind of difficult and I think it's a burden on, you know, the people concerned and this board. And the last thing, I just, I don't think I ever submitted a letter of opposition for the hours. That's all I'm against. I'm, all of the other stuff I am totally in support of, but just the 24-hour unlimited, I don't know how many businesses in town have that. And the only other question, the, it said that it was only, I was just wondering what's happening with Sabon, with the fuel tankers that are stored there. Are they going to be stored there any longer?
It's not being requested.
Okay. So there, there won't be tankers going in and out 24 hours a day either? Okay, thank you very much.
It's not being requested of us.
Okay.
As part of this permit.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's all I can speak to.
Appreciate your time. We had a busy evening. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from, yes. Take your time.
While it's fresh in my mind, I believe it was mentioned on the hours, I don't think that is proper because it will not be enforced like many other rules that we have here in town. The hours from 6:00 morning to, that's fairly logical, but there's no need of having the opportunity to do these things all night long, be repairs and everything else going on there. Couple of things. In your last agreement, there's an article in there, it's very small, but it's, you were supposed to put up signs, trucks in a ring. I have yet to see them. It's at 4:00 this afternoon, they're still out there. I think some of these things have to be looked into and followed through. Tank trucks. I got a letter from the zoning enforcement officer saying that issue had been resolved, that they would not be parking tank trucks at 151. Now, I couldn't hear it earlier tonight, but you mentioned something, someone here mentioned something about tank trucks. It's requested in exhibit B in their application for four tank trailers.
This is not before our board as part.
Pardon?
This is not in front of our board as part of the application to our board we have here with their requesting.
The original, the original application requested the application been amended to delete the tankers, John.
I'm sorry, I cannot hear you.
The application has been amended to delete the tankers.
To delete them?
Yes.
There will be no tank trucks. That is correct.
That's what I'm understanding.
All right, now, we have these rules and regulations. You people sit here every other week and you spend a lot of time at it. Who enforces these rules and regulations? This complaint was filed the 1st of November. We're now getting into our eighth month and this is just coming before the board. I don't know who the enforcement people are, whether it's you or it's the zoning board of appeal or the building commissioner or who. But I think that something should be done to speed up the process, whether it's right or wrong.
So that's your statement? You'd like to see when there is, we're complaint-driven in this town.
Pardon?
We are complaint-driven in this town, as you know.
I'm sure.
And what you're, what you're saying is, once a complaint is registered, you want to see a little bit speedier action on it. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I guess that's about it for me for now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to say something in regard to this application?
Can I respond?
Yes, please.
Few issues raised. The board should know that when the vehicles are loaded with C and D or whatever materials, they don't come back to the yard loaded, okay? So that's a misconception. The hours of, who polices? Who polices, okay? Our town polices. We have zoning enforcement officers. We have two, okay? And both those people have been to our site, have walked the site, spent over an hour walking the site when all the vehicles, just about all the vehicles were there. So the town does police the permits that you issue. And although the hearing may have taken several months to set up for this board, I want to make sure that this board understands that the policing aspects were going on from day one, from whenever the complaint was filed. We received letters. We responded to the letters. We addressed the concerns of our building commissioner and our assistant zoning enforcement officer and, and the town planner. So the fact that it's not all being done in this forum in an open meeting doesn't mean it's not going on. As far as signage on a state highway, this is not something that my client has any control over, okay? It's Mass Highway. They determine what signs we have on Route 151. So if there's some issue that the planning board feels that we should have more signage, you know, perhaps it would be best for the town to communicate that to Mass Highway. I mean, we wouldn't be adverse to communicating it to Mass Highway, but it's not something that we can control. The board needs to remember, in the context of our operational hours, that our neighbors are the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, okay? They're not occupying that land. It's open space. And a pet hotel and a vet clinic, okay? So we are not in a residential neighborhood. We are actually at the, basically at the confluence of two major highways in our community. And there's a lot of noise going on that is completely unrelated to my client's activities at his site. But he would agree as part of a condition to just be able to come and go during those hours of 9:00 to 6:00 a.m. and not be loading or unloading, et cetera. And all of the work done on any of the vehicles is done within the confines of this garage. Thank you.
Mark Fineran, precinct 6. I just got a text message from a friend of mine who lives in a residence on Cloverfield, which is just beyond the easement, and they wrote a letter. They couldn't make it tonight and they just wanted, wanted me to ask if it was in the file and if you read it.
Who's it from?
John Doyle.
Anybody else? Any comments? Okay, then at this point, no further comments. I will close the hearing and we will take the matter under advisement. Pardon? Do you have a motion to take it under advisement? Somebody?
I move we take the matter under advisement.
I'll second.
You move to second and that we take the matter under advisement. All in favor?
Aye.
Go assisting. Next on our agenda is a continuation again. The applicant is Falmouth Hospitality LLC, definitive plan to abandon a portion of Lantern Lane located at Lot 2 in 556 Main Street, Falmouth.
For the record, Joe Pezznola from Hancock Associates representing Falmouth Hospitality LLC. When last we met, we answered questions, got input from, from the neighborhood and I believe the board was looking for some questions to be answered by, by council. I understand you're in receipt of a, a letter from town council dated 5/27/14. We've reviewed that. We think that it is aligned with our, our original position with regards to what we're proposing and that, that we have no, no issues with, with what's, what's in that letter and the call for an easement document to be filed if the Barnstable County Registry is, is something we envisioned and have no issue with. So with, with that, I'll, I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, now, all of the board members do have in their possession, I believe, the letter from Mr. Duffy. Do you have any questions or comments?
Pretty clear.
Pretty clear. Okay. Then I should be able to close the hearing at this point because that is what we were waiting for. We will look for that, for public comment, but the board has no comments on it. And just a synopsis which Mr. Pezznola has given is that it can be abandoned and that Mr. Duffy does agree or does say that there should be an easement filed so that people who are on Lantern Lane can have the rights to pass. And now the public, please. Pardon? Oh, Doug, I'm sorry.
It, I guess the way I read it, it says, "We can choose to agree to do that if we so decide."
Correct. Mm-hmm. But it would be advisable to do so, to have that covenant filed.
Oh, the covenant, but I meant the whole.
Oh.
Approval.
Oh, yes.
Still at our discretion.
At our discretion.
Just that it's a possibility if we choose to.
Sure.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Edward Kirk and I'm here representing the Goulds and the Telliers who live on Lantern I'd like to just briefly recap the, the points that have been made and to address the question of Mr. Duffy's letter. It's our position that the process itself here is, is not in order in this respect. What's been presented is something entitled, "A Plan, Definitive Plan for Abandonment." Mr. Duffy, in response to the material that we submitted, recognizes that this is a petition, should be a petition for a modification of a previous subdivision. That would involve bringing to you the previous subdivision and showing the way in which it's being modified. What they're doing here is they're just giving you a very narrow picture of their own lot and saying that they want to, quote, "Abandon the way as it comes through their lot." and saying that they want to, quote, "abandon the way as it comes through their lot." And I think that is, for a project of this size and 108 units, a very close-by, quiet residential neighborhood, you've got to go by the book. You've got to follow the correct procedure. If they want to modify the subdivision, they should come in with a plan that shows the subdivision as modified. And then you look at the whole thing and say, "Would we have approved this in the first instance if we were presented with this subdivision in its most recent iteration?" So I think as a matter of procedure, it's not in order for approval. With respect to Mr. Duffy's letter, the covenant that he's talking about is not the traditional covenant that is a bond to guarantee performance. It relates to substantive rights. And what he's saying is, you should require a covenant that's going to demonstrate our continued rights in that parcel that they own and which they propose to, quote, "abandon our rights." That should be before you, before you act. I think Mr. Duffy's words were "require." I don't think that means, "Close the hearing, close the book, and hopefully they file something." That should be before you, before you act. It should be open for us to comment and determine whether or not they have, in fact, protected our rights. I think you should be wanting to know, are there going to be barriers, traffic gates? We've got a 108-unit motel. Is it going to provide for guests and vendors going north over the subdivision? Is it going to be something to keep the public from coming through their parking lot? There's a number of very important rights that still need to be addressed, need to be presented by the applicant and addressed by you. We also brought, I submitted some information presenting the thesis that, at the end of the day, this is still going to be not one lot, but two. And I submitted some case law and references to the, in the bylaw. And I hope you had an opportunity to see that. It was reviewed by Mr. Gore. He comes to a different conclusion. Needless to say, we disagree strongly with the position he came to. But even assuming, if you take his position as accurate, that it's one lot, then for purposes of subdivision planning, what you're presented with is a 1,200-foot-long way that dead-ends at the beginning of the applicant's property. Is that something that, in the ordinary case, you would approve if that, if a subdivision was presented to you? 1,200-foot-long road, residences on all side, coming through and dead-ending at a private piece of property? I think at the very least, you'd have to be here requesting waivers, or turnarounds, cul-de-sac, or something like that. So that is why you need the overall picture, not just this very selective presentation of one piece of property. You're a planning board, you're dealing with subdivisions. I just, I'd like to hand out to you the two previous subdivisions, the way things stand now, and the, the assessor's map that shows the network of roads that leads from Dillingham Avenue down to this property. So I don't, I just don't believe it's as simple as the applicants are suggesting, and I think you have more work to do. I think it needs to be put into proper procedural shape. You definitely need to see this document that's going to dictate what rights people have, going back and forth, and consider whether or not, if this was presented to you today, would you approve this original subdivision dead-ending at the Fay property? So as a procedural matter, I think it should be denied without prejudice, because that's the proper posture, proper decision for your Board to take under these circumstances. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and the Board. I'm Kathleen Taylor. I live at three, have a house at Three Moss Pond Road. And I'm in a bar, so I sort of received a notice. I wish to speak to the proposal to abandon the road. As you heard tonight, Lantern Lane passes through a quiet residential neighborhood. I have three bedrooms on Lantern Lane. I'm concerned, of course, of an increase in traffic as a result of the hotel being there, and especially commercial traffic on this private road, which could occur if this road were abandoned and we lost control over what happens on it. Also, when you change the character of a neighborhood, you have to understand you change the character of the downtown. And this is especially true of property that's near the downtown area. A second concern is drainage, and perhaps you've heard about this before. But abandoning the road must not allow changes in the road itself. It must be, it's essential that any drainage goes towards Main Street. And changes in the road is something that we could lose control over. This has come up before, two or three times, with other permits that were put in place for properties on Main Street, and it was addressed satisfactorily. And I'd like that to happen in this case, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to say something?
Madam Chair, if I just might respond to a couple of the points. First of all, we, as far as process, we work with staff. We have applied for a definitive subdivision approval. We submitted a signed Form C. It is the process one would go through. What we call this, whether it's abandonment, modification, under 81W or what have you, it's, as far as what we are, what we must do is fill out that Form C. It's either a Form A or a Form B preliminary, or it's a Form C definitive. This is a definitive. What we're asking you to do is modify the original subdivision plan in a very defined area, and with regards to, on paper only. We're not here proposing any changes physically to the ground. So that's my first point. My second point with regards to the access, again, as we stated before and state again tonight, we are not changing the rights at all. We cannot change the rights of the other people on Lantern Lane and the people that have rights to pass and repass over that segment at all. And we are making no physical changes to impede that whatsoever. With regards to the future plans and the future, the future applications before this Board, they're not here tonight. That's something that we will and have to do in the future, and vet out all of those issues of whether or not anything we materially propose to do within that easement then traipses upon any of those rights. But today, tonight, we're not making or proposing any physical changes to interrupt any of those rights, any of the current drainage situations or what have you. That all will be addressed and will be brought to the Board in the future. The issues are that we need to take these steps incrementally, and that we need to address this issue now. And then we need to formulate the final plans, work with staff, work with the Cape Cod Commission, and bring the project forward. So I fully believe that we've followed the proper procedures. I believe that your counsel has reviewed the issue and concurred with what the Board's been asked to do in the powers of that Board, and we would kindly ask the Board to approve the modification.
Does the Board have any further comments?
This is a project of significant size. Does it require Cape Cod Commission review?
It does.
So doesn't that precede our discussion?
The reason for it being lockstep, my understanding, and Brian, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that certain things have to happen before it can go to the Cape Cod Commission. If it has not gone as we've seen it, lockstep, they have nothing to take to the Cape Cod Commission. That's my understanding. Is that a correct understanding, Brian?
Sort of. The only thing in front of you is a definitive plan showing what you have in front of you tonight. Technically, that's all you have.
Right.
So there's nothing to...
Once again, we have another development on Main Street waiting for the Cape Cod Commission's scope of work for Main Street, so we need to discuss that at a future meeting.
Yeah. Anybody else? Okay, then at this point, are you ready to close the hearing? You're not?
If the Board's comfortable.
That's what I'm asking.
Any more to comment?
No, I asked. Nobody's got anything further to say. That's why I'm ready.
One more.
Ah, okay. Under the wire here.
Matthew Gould, Lantern Lane. I just, I just want to reiterate what my attorney said, and I just strenuously object to the abandonment and the manner in which this appears to be coming down, like unfolding like a magic show, where, you know, we have to do this, we have to crawl before we can walk, when we all in the whole town know what the real endgame here is. And I just, I just really want to caution the first step of abandonment of a subdivision road that was approved by this Board in 1947, and want to make sure that we get this procedurally correct, as well as have you note my objections. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy's in the back.
Yes. Oh, Mrs. Hayward.
I understood that Mr. Kirk presented a letter for Mr. Duffy, and then my question...
No.
Okay. Mr. Kirk presented some information about how he thought this should proceed. And my question is, we then had the proponent for the project go back to his original proposition. Did you address the issue that Mr. Kirk put forward about that approach? And if so, then I missed it, and can you repeat it again?
My understanding is that there are two different ways that this is being looked at, as to how the whole proposal should have proceeded. I think that our planning office certainly worked with the applicants and would have stopped it if it were in improper manner in which they were proceeding. Mr. Kirk believes it is not properly being done. So we've got a difference of opinion here. And please know that the Board will be discussing this at a future date after we close the hearing, and then we will be discussing it and coming to a decision. But what we have now, Mrs. Hayward, is a difference of opinion. Okay? So...
I'm glad you're, that you are going to discuss it at a future date.
Oh, we always do.
I want you to discuss it now, but...
No, we can't. We just, that's why we take it under advisement. We've got a full enough agenda tonight without going on with this. So if everybody is now currently satisfied with what has been presented, is there anything else from the Board? Any further questions? Then I close this hearing, and a motion to take it under advisement, please.
I move that we take it under advisement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we take the issue under advisement, the matter under advisement. All in favor?
Aye.
Co-assisting. The next is a discussion. I think I'm going to wait for just a moment, because a number of people are leaving, so we'll wait for the room to clear of those who are leaving.
Good job, Pat.
The next on the agenda, the discussion is on the applicant's Wald Management Incorporated for a site plan review to raise the existing inn and construct six condominium units on .59 acres with associated parking, drainage, and landscaping. And there are, there's a notice?
Madam Chair, we have published notices in the Falmouth Enterprise on May 23, 2014, and May 30, 2014, 13 of those notices were sent via regular mail on May 23, 2014. And according to my notes, none have been returned.
Okay. Now, we have a full house here tonight, and I do want to caution people that this is a site plan review. That means we look at things like landscaping, we look at things like fences, safety issues, lighting. We do not look at architecture. We do not look at historic. It is the ZBA, the Zoning Board of Appeals, that will be giving any kind of permits for whatever is going to happen on this site, and it is the Historic Districts Commission that looks at the historic significance and makes the determination. Under a site plan review, we do not look at any of that. We are not able to look at any of that. So when you comment, please limit your comments to what this Board can look at under a site plan review for the applicant.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, fellow members of the Board. For the record, my name is Stephen McKenzie, and I represent Wald Management Incorporated. With me tonight is David and Diana Wall, who are over here, and Michael Boselli, Principal Engineer with Falmouth Engineering. Thank you for the opening comment. That was the first thing I wanted to address tonight, is to make sure that the folks knew. We just had a hearing downstairs with the Historic District Commission, and they had a similar opening to let people know exactly why we're here tonight, and what's on the table, what's not on the table. So the first thing I'd like to do is just quote what the purpose of site plan review. And it says, "The purpose of site plan review is to ensure the design and layout of certain developments permitted as a matter of right or by special permit will constitute suitable development and will not result in a detriment to the neighborhood or the environment." And that's what we're here for tonight. It's just to look at those things that the Planning Board looks at for site plan review. Okay? And site plan review is applicable to this development, because we are going to put up new development that's going to have more than five parking spaces. So under Section 192, site plan review is applicable here. And as you indicated, we also need to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit, which we have applied for under Section 240-3. The existing use of the property, this is a, the existing site plan, existing use of the property is a commercial inn known as the Alma Jen, which includes a 19-bedroom commercial inn. The inn was constructed approximately 1810 or 1811, and was moved...
As you were pointing out yourself, we've got a long agenda tonight. Stick to site plan review issues, please. Thank you.
So, our plan is to raise the inn, and this is our proposed new development. The property sits in three zoning districts, excuse me, two zoning districts. There's a V1 zoning district up at the front, and the historic district. A small portion of one of the old buildings was in the historic district, that's proposed to be raised. What we're going to do is all of the new buildings will meet all of the setbacks, the front side area. We provide, proposing 18 parking spaces, there's six units. Under our table of parking requirements, we're required to have two spaces, but we've provided additional guest spot for each one. We have six separate parking areas. Section 109 C, E, and D talk about spaces for backing into the street or other areas. What we've done is we have six separate parking areas of three spaces each, and that's similar to what we did a couple of months ago across the street with William Fender's development, where we did two spots with landscape islands in between, and they do essentially set up exactly the same. It was approved a few months ago by this board and the zoning board, and that's what we're proposing, something similar here. The two spaces for each unit, plus an additional space, and a landscape island. So, instead of a collection of parking spaces, we have six separate distinct parking areas. So, therefore, the provisions of 109 C, D, and E don't really apply, because these are spots that are less than five parking spaces. As far as lot coverage, the existing lot coverage by structures is 28.3%, and we're going to actually reduce that just slightly to 28.1. This is, as you said, it's pre-existing non-conforming, and we'll be dealing with that, the extra lot coverage at the zoning board. Structures, paving, and parking, we're allowed to go up to 40%, and we're going to be at According to the Institute of Traffic Engineers, a trip generation manual, a condominium produces 5.86 trips per day, so there's roughly 35 daily trips that'll be the result from this site. Commercial inn with 19 bedrooms would certainly have much more traffic being generated. The inn is not operating right now, but it is licensed, and it could be operating, so we do not have an issue of abandonment abuse. The rights to come in under 240-3 is still available for us, and that's what we're doing. It's not being operated at this time, but they could certainly have the right to go in and operate it. One of the things that we've done in the... Trying to keep you down in this site plan review stuff, don't want to discuss too much. One of the things we've tried to do is incorporate some of the features from the building. There's a bell that exists on proportion of the building, which was an addition to the inn, so we're going to relocate that over to here. We have a fence area, we'll pick a fence in front of each one. So, what we're trying to do is create a village within a village, and so we also incorporated some of the design features that were in the inn into the new buildings. You recall that we changed some of the first plan that was filed with you, because we thought this was a much better plan, and it would be really create a, as I say, village within the village. Mike Borselli's here to answer any questions you have regarding the engineering and drainage, and I'll be back to answer anything else that you have.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, my name is Michael Borselli, Principal with Falmouth Engineering, and I represent the applicant. My role is, I'm on the project team in IS, along with the owners and the architect, designed the siting and the location of the buildings on the site, designed the connections to the municipal sewer, the drainage, and the water services that serve each of the units. We received a staff report from the planning department with some minor comments. We received, just this afternoon, a report from the town engineer with some items that he had concerns with, all of which are reasonable, and we plan to meet with him in the upcoming few days and sort out some of those details. And if there's some minor revisions to the plans, we're going to make those after we consult with him, and hopefully satisfy him on some of the minor issues he had. I'm here to answer any questions.
Pardon? Yeah. Lighting, landscaping, anybody want to speak to that? That's all part of site plan.
Well, the lighting is... I didn't really design the lighting, but the concept of the lighting design is to provide modest, simple lamp posts for each unit, because these are, in effect, like small residential units. So, there's a proposal to provide a lamp post at each unit, to provide lighting at the entrances and lighting along the sidewalk in front of the units. So, it's low prof, low lumens, low, just adequate lighting that you'd expect to see for a residential property, certainly nothing commercial, or not in keeping with the typical aesthetic concept on the street.
Does the board have any comments or questions? Yes, Jim?
I think I heard it, but I just wanted to ask Mike. It's, the proposed buildings are conforming with all the setbacks, front, back, and side, right? Is that what I heard before?
Yes, that all the buildings meet the required setbacks.
Okay. And all water runoff is being retained within the site?
Yes, there is a series of drainage trenches at each...
See them in the front? I don't, I'm trying to understand what's happening with roof drains and other things.
The drainage system, if you look on this plan, you'll see these blue circles. Those are leaching pits at a subsurface, and they're designed to collect by pipe water that runs off from the driveway, parking places, and they're sized accordingly to also collect roof runoff from downspouts at each building there. So, they have two purposes. They drain the parking spaces and the roof runoff.
How many? We don't have a colored plan in front of us. Can you just point out what you're saying?
These blue circles are basically, they're six-foot diameter by six-foot-deep leaching pits, and they're below the ground, and they're surrounded by crushed stone, and they're sized to have adequate capacity to drain those surfaces. We use the, your actual town of Falmouth subdivision regulations for the design storm and the drainage calculations. The town engineers review those, and I believe he's found them adequate.
So, all the runoff from the roof, all the way here goes all the way to those there, is what you're saying?
By downspouts and piping.
Any other questions from the board at this point? We have a staff report. Do you have any comments?
The Fire Department requested additional hydrant at the end of Elmarch Way, and there are also some sewer and design issues with regard to stormwater drainage. We're going to go over with the town engineer. There are some zoning issues, but I will confer to the deputy and Mr. Wall with regards to those, and certainly not remain to the board. Otherwise, I would expand upon the last-dip details for the board's application later on. We'll probably be looking at this again in a week or so.
Okay. Any questions from the board further? Okay. Any questions from the public, please? Yes, sir. You must get up there and state your name. We're being televised.
Hello, Donald Peters. I'm on 71 Elmarch Way, right at the end of the cul-de-sac here on this road. The question relates to the comment on the fire hydrant, the additional fire hydrant on Elmarch Way. There is no fire hydrant on Elmarch Way, and to the best of my knowledge, there is no water main in Elmarch Way. So, I'd like the comments, or at least the board, to take notice of the fact that the... I'm not quite sure how this is going to be serviced in terms of utilities, water, gas. Is this going to be hooked up to new gas main? As far as I know, the inn at the moment is hooked up through a private connection back through Shoreway Acres. So, I'd like to understand how this proposal might impact the utilities in this street. And certainly having a fire hydrant on Elmarch Way would be a nice thing, but I'm just quit not quite sure how this all ties into the development of the site. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to... Yes, Mrs. Hayward. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
Sarah Peters, Elmarch Way, Set Number 71 Elmarch Way. I will reserve my comments about the overall plan as a whole for the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, but as far as this is concerned here, if you can imagine the impact we have gone, I've lived there since 1996. It has been a sleepy inn, the Elmarch Inn, a very sleepy inn with maybe five or 10 cars in the entire street, in that section of the street, both sides, at any time during the summer, five or 10 cars. Now, we have 12 parking spaces across the street, and this is proposing 18 parking spaces. If you think this doesn't have an impact, please rethink. Thank you. With parking spaces come the cars and the traffic, and everybody loves to go down to the inn, zip around the cul-de-sac, when they realize that there's no beach down that way. Thank you.
Mrs. Hayward.
Nancy Hayward, West Falmouth. I was going to comment and ask you if you had, if you were able to consider the impact that this project was going to have on that nice neighborhood, the cul-de-sac there. I also would like to know, you have a referral, is it correct that you have a referral sheet in your plan, in your collection of information? There's been comment by Mr. Curry on the fact that the Fire Department has responded with information about the need for fire hydrant. Are you considering any of the other issues on this sheet? It says Board of Health, suitability of land, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and it gets down to Historical Commission and historic issues. I am a member of the Falmouth Historical Commission. I have not checked...
But we can't, under Site Plan Review, Nancy, we can't take that up.
You do not take that up.
This is just, we cannot, under Site Plan Review, no. We, these are issues that are on this sheet that have to be addressed, but that doesn't mean our board, under Site Plan Review, can address all of the issues that are still open. That could be the Zoning Board of Appeals, that these issues would still be open that they have to look at, or the Historic District Commission.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Good evening. Barbara Wayne, West Falmouth. Ms. Kerfoot, you referenced the Historical District Commission earlier, and they're looking at the piece of the property that relates to the outhouse, which is in an historic district, but the rest of the property falls under the Historical Commission, as Nancy Hayward commented. What I find confusing, from a layperson's perspective, because I know you want to keep this to the engineering-related issues, is that when you read the Mass General Law section that describes the Historical Commission in each town, Chapter 40, Section 8D specifically, it specifies that the Historical Commission will advise two groups in each particular area, we have different makeups, obviously, per town, but that would mean that you should expect from them, at the planning board, the conservation committee, the ZBA, Anne Selectman, should all receive advice from the Historical Commission as to the historical merits, the importance, potentially archaeological importance, et cetera. So, in trying to keep the site plan review devoid of the historical content, I'm confused, because when you look at this through the lens of Mass General Law, it says you should expect this.
We are not the permitting board, though. That is the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Yeah, it doesn't say anything about permitting. It says that they should, that the Historical Commission should make recommendations to the various civic boards. We've got it on a, you know, we have, we're looking at 8D on someone's iPhone, just so you know, to confirm.
No, this is fine, but this is not what we do under Site Plan Review.
I'm just saying there seems to be a kind of a misfit...
There may be.
...going on here, in terms of, you should have an expectation to hear about the current value, the current historical value of that building.
Jim?
If I understand it, the Special Permit Granting Authority is the one that's supposed to be paying attention to that, and sometimes the planning board is in that role. We are not in that role on this hearing. So, we're not disagreeing with you, but that advice goes to the Special Permit Granting Authority. We're doing a site plan review, two different things.
And when is that pertinent?
It's the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Right.
And we've been saying that all night long.
Right. So, when they take that up, which is going to be June 19, that is when all the historic information will be brought to bear at their hearing, that you all should be there to express your concerns about the historic nature of what's going on.
Someone's lot, Jericho Pat. Seems to be a very sensitive issue here, so, reading in the papers, I drove to see what we're talking about. Try to turn things around. I'm looking at what is happening here and what is there. The congestion, you cannot turn around. God forbid that there isn't a fire, that you have to put the Fire Department there, or many other things. Seems that there is such a fragmented interest of each, the different groups. So, I don't want to, I'm somehow confused in this whole thing, and I want to ask you one thing, please. If you represent us, the people, whatever your authority is in respect to this project, I wish that you surrender the thing, do not consider it. This is disgrace, what we see and what I find out there. And I, again, are we making it better? Something that's been there for 200 years, is it going to be better, what we're going to do now? It's very confusing what is, so I'm asking you for, whatever your authority to this thing is, do not vote for them. Vote for us if you represent the people of Falmouth.
You actually did bring up something that we can consider under Site Plan Review...
Thank you.
...which is safety.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Mary Lane Elmhurst. I live on 65 Elmarch Way.
God forbid that there isn't a fire, that you have to put the fire department there or many other things. Seems that there is such a fragmented interest of each, the different groups. So I don't want to -- I'm somehow confused in this whole thing, and I want to ask you one thing, please. If you represent us, the people, whatever your authority is in respect to this project, I wish that you surrender the thing, do not consider it. This is disgrace, what we see and what I find out there. And I, again, are we making it better? Something that's been there for 200 years, is it going to be better what we're going to do now? It's very confusing what is, so I'm asking you for, whatever your authority to this thing is, do not vote for them. Vote for us if you represent the people of Falmouth.
You actually did bring up something that we can consider under site plan review, which is safety.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Mary Lane Elmhurst. I live on 65 Elmarchway. In the summer, our street is often very difficult to get out of. People are parked on the side of the street with the development of the new bakery and the new wonderful things on Main Street, but our street has become very, very congested. I do not think that this is a very good idea for our street, considering the added parking and the added traffic. And actually, a letter was written, I'm not exactly sure what board it was written to last year, about this particular issue, about the traffic on Elmarchway and the fact that there are cars parked. There are enough for two cars there, and there are cars already parked on the street. This is just going to add to the congestion. This is just one of my objections. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Leigh Drescher. I live in West Falmouth, and I am just appalled at what I see happening in this town. This is the fifth historic building to be destroyed.
We can't -- I'm sorry.
I understand that, but going to be -- this is a wonderful little town to be building a big Marriott hotel and taking away somebody's street.
Please, ma'am, I'm sorry, but I can't allow you to continue because that has nothing to do with what we're looking at.
Well, I think the planning board should consider what they're doing to the town of Falmouth.
Yes, sir.
Donald Peters, Elmarchway. Since we are talking about safety here, and since we are talking about traffic here, and since we are talking about parking here, I have two comments, well, probably a lot more than two comments, on the parking. Not quite sure, and maybe the board can clarify, what actually constitute a -- I'm not sure what these were called, vegetation islands or these green separations between parking spaces that turn 18 parking spaces magically into compliant groups of sub-five spaces? What's -- where's the dividing line there? I mean, this is 18 parking spaces next to each other. They have little strips of vegetation between them, but practically speaking, I mean, is there a law that says you can do this? Because this is 18 contiguous parking spaces from a functional standpoint.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's on the review, sir.
Thank you. Secondly, the presentation indicated that there were something like 35, there was a number stated, per of traffic trips per condo unit. So are we multiplying 35 times six here to get 200 or so traffic trips per day added to, as Mrs. Elmhurst said, the already congested situation at the end of Elmarchway?
I believe it was 35 for the combination of all six units.
That doesn't seem like a very believable number in that case. So that leads to my other question, which is exactly what sort of a traffic study is done on the street here related to the impact of this development? And as was pointed out by the last speaker or the speaker before that, a similar development of two of these units across the street. So now we're looking at, you know, 10 new residences here on this little tiny street with quite an additional number of cars and parking spaces and things like that. This is a very small, very narrow, little dead-end street. As my wife pointed out, every 15 minutes or 10 minutes in the summertime, a person is coming down this street and going around the circle because they're coming down here to look for the beach. There's already enough traffic on this road. The pavement on Main Street that was done, the special pavements, made for a very narrow entrance between this road and Main Street. It's hard to make a right turn because of the projection of the special pavements there as it is. So, you know, we're looking at a traffic problem here, you know. There are small children growing up in these houses, or at least there have been in the past, and there will be in the future, and, you know, I don't understand, and I'm not quite sure, what sort of a traffic study is going to be done to justify this kind of additional congestion on the small street. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Brian.
My name's Brian Wallace. I also live on Elmarchway. I'd just like to make recommendations to the board that take the plans and make a trip down Elmarchway and take a look at how vast, how huge these houses are, these buildings are going to be, in relation to all the other buildings in the neighborhood. And it's not, yeah, this is going to make a huge impact on the quality of life of everybody living on that street. You know, a few of the neighbors have got here tonight, but not everybody could get here. I just think the plan is overzealous. I think it's just a bit too much for the street. If it was a couple of single-family homes, I don't think we'd have a problem with it, but this is just, this is a lot, and I think you need to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cardmina Moc Muñoz de Luna, West Falmouth. I have a question. I am very ignorant about what is going on. When were the rules you are applying written and revisited? Because it seems to me that what is going on in West Falmouth, in Falmouth, all over, and it doesn't matter from which board comes, is really not coping with what the neighbors and what the communities want and need. The houses they are building are not definitely for affordable living, and I don't know. If someone could tell me whether the laws were written many, many years ago and they were not revisited, because it's not really going with the pace of life.
The rules that we operate under are the zoning bylaws, and they have different responsibilities. The zoning Board of Appeals has some responsibilities, the planning board has some responsibilities, and you'd have to look at them to answer your question. It's pretty extensive, and yes, they go, a lot of them go back to the 20s, and they have been updated in a piecemeal fashion over time.
When was the last time that they revisited?
They're constantly. Every time, we go to town meeting and ask for a change. It becomes another patchwork.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else? Yes. I'm happy to accept that question, but that does not have specifically to do with site plan review.
Malcolm Donald, West Falmouth Highway, excuse me, Amble Side Drive, West Falmouth. I'm wondering about the parking spaces. Are those going to be available for tourists and visitors to the town?
They should not be.
All right.
They are associated with those units.
So what is going to stop somebody from looking down Elmarchway and seeing all those -- some empty parking spaces and then just either A, going down to C to park there, or just driving down there, cruising to looking for a parking space?
That's something we can require, that they be labeled "private parking."
So that's going to stop people from going down Elmarchway?
And then they call the police and have them towed if they're not parked properly. But that's the only thing that can be done.
Uh-huh. So what about the people going down to look at the parking space and they -- to find out that it isn't available for them? I mean, let's say that somebody comes, you know, somebody's driving around looking for a parking space, and they see all these parking spaces, so they go down Elmarchway and, okay, so either A, they park there illegally, if it's illegal, they park legally if it's legal or illegally if it isn't legal, or B, they just wasted a trip down Elmarchway and have to turn around some way, and what happens if there's a car behind them and the car ahead of them, somebody behind them say, oh, they see a parking space, they're going down there? I mean, we're looking--
I can't answer the question, Mr. Donald. You're raising hypothetical issues, and I cannot answer that question. I've already been seeing cars being ticketed and towed that are parking where they oughtn't to be in town.
But what about traffic? Has anybody studied the traffic?
That's what, there is a question as to whether there was a traffic study. I've made note of that.
Okay. Is that traffic study going to consider visitor, you know?
No, it usually doesn't. It covers usually the number of trips that are associated with that.
Oh, so we're not going to consider tourists that come to town?
Mr. Donald, we can't do that.
We can't?
No, we cannot, unless you want to put a gate across the entrance to town and say, no tourists allowed. We honestly cannot start blocking roads or asking those questions. We can put private parking. We can require that, that there be signs.
Shouldn't there be some estimate of number of visitors looking for parking spaces?
No, we can't do that. I don't know how they can do that.
That's amazing.
Well, amazing or not.
Well, we can do a lot of things, but we can't do that.
Maybe there's an app for that.
Sarah Peters, Elmarchway. In the meeting downstairs, we were told that this was an inaccurate drawing because we were told that they were going to move it. Every unit was going to be shifted this way because they wanted to avoid the Historic District Commission altogether and not have to deal with them, the fact that there's some little piece of property on there. So that's what was said downstairs in the meeting. And I look at this and I see 10 foot, 0.6 feet between this building and the edge of the property. I'm wondering how close it will be to the edge of the property, and if this does manage to get bulldozed through, I would like to request from this committee that some large trees be planted and that a wall of green perhaps, so that I don't have to look at this and the rest of the neighborhood that now looks at a wall of green and will no longer be able to look at a wall of green. I would like to, is there enough room in this sliver of land to protect us?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that is indeed something we can look at. Yes, ma'am.
Sandra Blockball. I live on Curtis Street behind, I call it the erections, you can call it the towers. They're enormous things that I were told were going to be nice little two-story buildings. My house is two-story. These things look like twin towers. And the complete deforestation of the area, I mean, they stole my shade. It was a nice, leafy, quiet little neighborhood, and so was Elmarchway. No more. You want to duplicate it with that? One of the spaces over on Elmarchway now that you're counting as a building is a swimming pool, so it's a wide-open area. Now you want to put two units there? Would you allow in some other place to put six units on that size lot with nice little green areas between the parking spaces? They do that at the mall. I mean, you know, it's a total destruction of the area. Come look at my fence. You have a setback for the front, but you didn't for the back. It's practically right on my lawn. And I do have a right of way to go out into the parking lot, but they park, the way they park in the parking lot, half the time I can't get out or in. I've called the police so many times, they know who I am.
Okay.
Consider that.
We will. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to make a comment? Is there something new to be said, or has it already been said? Okay.
Mary Lane Elmhurst, Elmarchway. I do think it would be very important for each board member to drive down Curtis Ave. It is horrific what has happened to Curtis Ave.
Thank you. Mrs. Hayward had her hand up first.
Is landscape plan only a zoning issue, or does planning consider that also? I have a comment about the landscaping for the new buildings which are across the street from Elmarch Inn. My comment there is that they had a landscape plan, and the buildings are at least partly occupied, and the landscape planning is not in. So if some, if, which board does the landscape planning, and at what point do the landscape plans have to be completed? And do you look at them?
We look at them, but at what point do they have to be completed, Brian? Okay, prior to occupancy, Brian said.
Well--
And you're saying some of them are occupied, but--
I'm saying in the project across the street.
Okay, so that was, that's a complaint.
So that is something when you're, when or if you're conditioning.
That's a complaint, and what you're saying here, what you're saying here is if this is approved, that we need to pay more attention to that.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sir.
Donald Peters, Elmarchway. This will be brief, again, on the traffic study. I want to make sure the board, in looking into the traffic study, takes note of the fact that this is a dead-end street, and that, as was pointed out by the person talking about the cars coming in looking for spots, a car coming in looking for parking spaces, two trips, because they're going to come in, and the only way out is for them to go back out. And again, there's a place down here where this road is almost impassable by two cars. You've got to stop, pull over almost onto the lawn to get vehicles by. So don't forget the fact that the vehicular traffic in here is particularly congested by the fact that this is a dead-end street.
Thank you. Do you want to say something further, Steve?
Just very briefly, Chairman, there's been a lot of talk about the traffic. We didn't do a traffic study. This is a small development of just six units. The board is, excuse me?
Please.
The board is familiar and has seen many times the ITE trip generation manuals. They say right in there how many trips are generated. The inn may not have been very, very busy. Somebody else could buy it and turn it into a very busy inn. But an inn with 19 bedrooms will certainly produce a lot more trips than a six-unit condominium development. It's a total of 35 trips for the six. They issued those manuals, they update them every couple of years, they've been submitted to this board on many, many different occasions. The board, I think, is certainly familiar with how many trips are generated by a condominium development, especially one as small as six units. Elmarchway is a public way. It's a delightful street. If people want to come down there, that's not part of the traffic study. If people are driving down and take a look there or go to the beach, it has nothing to do with what's on the left side or what's on the right side or what's farther down the road. This is a small cul-de-sac, and this is a small development, and anybody else who might want to come in and operate that inn could certainly turn into a much busier inn. Its license is year-round. It may not have been used year-round for years, but it is a licensed year-round accommodation with 19 bedrooms, and there could certainly be considerably more traffic than this small condominium development will generate.
Thank you. Okay, does any of the board have any further questions of the applicant? All right, then, we'll, yes, Doug?
Will there be further landscaping that's not yet shown, or is that it?
I do have the landscape panel that is shown here. And what David does is he's put considerable effort to try to, as I say, make this a village. He's got Lockway Davis coming across through here, taking some of the features from the inn itself, this picket fence with gates to swing in. So when you look at it, when you look at it from an elevation standpoint, you can see the picket fence is coming across and the gates. This is the trellis, and there's landscaping, privacy landscaping between each of the buildings. There's landscaping to the rear and to the sides. There's a fence, agreement with the sellers, there'll be a fence on the side. There's already a existing fence all the way along the back of us. And most of this, as you can see, is pretty green. It's almost 75% green.
What type of material?
There's a table of what the plants are and the sizes in the number. You know, there's American elms, alvarites, snow fountain cherries. On the bottom of the sheet, L1, it lists the quantity of each of the plantings and the sizes that should be going in. sizes that should be going in. And I just wanted to ask one other comment that was made, that we said the plan was inaccurate. There's a very, very slight shift of this building. What we wanted to do, when we filed with the historicals, we wanted to take all the building out of the historic district, just so that it wouldn't have to be involved. So if you're looking at a very small corner here, we have more than enough setback all around. The building could slide forward, we have a 30 feet, 25 feet is a setback. The building could move forward and we'll take that part out. So there's gonna be a slight shift of the building. Other than that, the plan is extremely accurate. There's just gonna be a minor shift of that one building. And that's only because we chose to take it out of the historic district.
Mr. Wall?
I'm the developer that everyone is mad at. I just wanna...
You have to state your name, because they're watching.
David Wall. I just want to add a few comments. I live in town, less than a mile from this project. I've developed a lot of properties right here in town. I've won an award for my major two projects, the Falmouth Square Inn, which also had the same kind of situation. It was an older building and we tried to remodel it to make it work. The building commissioner came down, said, "They don't build them like they're used to, and it's a good thing, I'm condemning this." This is after taking it apart by hand. My first reaction was, "How could I make this building work?" And I couldn't really make it work. There is talking about roads, there is another road here besides this one. This is also a road, and I think it's part of the same town road. There's sort of a cul-de-sac here, it's not a dead end, cul-de-sac here. There's another cul-de-sac here. Circle, call it whatever you will. But there's... So cars could come this way, cars could come that way. I just wanted to bring that up for the parking situation. And my buildings look good. And in hindsight, everyone who came out and complained and had problems with my buildings, after the fact, when it's toned down and the landscape grows and the painting settles in, they like it. It's a nice project. We brought this to the beautification committee last week. They said, I don't know if they wrote the letter, they said they were going to, they think it's a real nice project. They like it a lot, they think it's very pretty, they think it'll work. These buildings are a little misleading, because they look like they're in a line. And they're not. They're some... They're a different spacing. The center one in this picture should really look smaller, because it's further back. And, you know, I just try to do the best I can. And we'll answer any questions that anyone has. As far as privacy for the neighbors and green issues, yeah, I always worked with that. That's big to me. I've got some trees coming in here, if I had to do more, I would. I have an ego. It's not just about money. I like people to like my projects, and I do the best I can. So if we have problems with site plan, parking issues, safety issues, I'm very concerned and will try to work those out.
Okay, we will bring this up again when? Is there a date yet, or... Okay.
I'll have to meet with the design team and our guys. I'll have to meet with the design team and the town officials, and they probably soon see Dan.
About a week or two. Okay.
Is this the last time we have a chance to speak?
No.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Wall, pretty much covered it. I just wanted to say it's okay for us to ask for them to consider additional landscaping to buffer for the neighbors.
So that we do that kind of thing?
We heard some concerns about that, and I just wanted to mention it publicly.
Yeah, we definitely do that kind of thing in the review. Mr. Wall's been through this a number of times, I think he's very familiar with that.
He didn't do it, so we can't do...
It's not on this plan.
It's not on this plan.
Is there any recourse?
I don't know what the recourse is. But I do know that with this plan, we can... That's part of what we're looking at with site plan review, is the landscaping. Okay? Thank you all for coming and for your comments. Next on our agenda is open space and recreation plan, the 2014 update goals and policies. And you were emailed Section 8 goals and objectives. We'll wait just a moment while people clear the room, and you can pull that out of your If you all wish to converse, please take it way down the hall so we can hear in here.
Do you drag more French to this, Ralph?
Pardon?
You drag more French?
Now he said he worked.
Hammer him.
Brian, do you want to explain what this is about, the goals and objectives? Do you have any kind of a voice? You sound like it's...
I'm gonna talk to that.
Yeah, that's okay.
Open space and recreation plan is something that we did five years. We're the board, because we get involved with it. But because the last version was derived, its goals and objectives from the... Are you okay there?
Yeah.
Local comprehensive plan update, 2005. I thought it was important for that reason, but for other reasons, just to have the opportunity to bring this from this board in a public, for any comments that the neighborhood about what is the bedrock of that open space and recreation plan. It's actually derived, stated, comprehensive of our recreation plan, of the guidelines. But these... This plan has three goals, and each goal has qualified policies attached to it. And we're in the process of updating that and sending it along to the Department of Conservation and Recreation. So I'd like to suggest to the board to take a moment to be able to tickle at these goals. My recommendation is carry on, the goal number there, 2009. There's been a lot of activity since then. And to move forward with the same set of goals and policies and an update for 2014. I don't need a vote of the board, I just need your thinking, consensus, praise, criticism, what we might have at this point, because it's a draft. And it'll go off as data as a draft, and then final comments will be added in that. We get a draft out here in the next week or so. We're waiting for the recreation teams, final comments, we've met with them, and the conservation commissions, final comments, but I'd like to get this out. We'll see later. It's just the board's thinking. The big thing with people, what's we have today, the main talks of iteration or changes that I can be able to discuss. Can you think they're great? Do you have a question?
Jim, you have a question?
Yes, on the first goal, to acquire 30% of the Falmouth's total land area. How we doing on that?
I think we're about 25%.
Thank you.
Yes, Paul?
I look at that 30%, and I'd like to get a little breakdown of what that is. Obviously, the town is... This is land area. And land area is about, looks like it's about 15,800, 16,000 acres.
It's 20... The round numbers, it's 30,000 acres for the town. So you're looking at...
30,000?
We're about 29 square miles. So we're looking for 30% as protected open space. I mean, you wouldn't be able to build that. We're about 25%.
Well, how much of the land area is already spoken for in terms of state facility, federal facilities, municipal facilities? There's a lot of things that have to be taken out of that before you start putting another 30% to it. There's a lot of non-taxable properties, and there's a lot of other properties that are not even anything we can do anything about. So 30% may not be achievable if you take out all those properties.
30% includes your private, like Salt Pond, Berg Sanctuaries has land, Nida has land, Town has land, some state properties protected, some federal properties are protected, the wildlife refuge, the family match, the wildlife refuge, Washford Island, state protected.
But 30% of whatever remains may not be achievable.
Uh, no, we're almost there to get...
Yeah.
Well, it's 300 committees started, as I understand, getting 300 acres in conservation land. They're above 2,300 already. And that's about half of that 30% you're looking for. And it gets harder to get the next half, and I'm wondering how achievable that really is, how much space is available for even...
You'd be surprised, Paul, there's some land out there, this land out there...
Where?
It doesn't even have to be the salt. It could be land that... Marshley Development, but has great habitat there. The Supervision Board is...
There's no question about it, but...
...developable. If you protect them in perpetuity, then you reach your goal. So we thought it was very lovable. Here, maybe yes, it's community acres, but there's also the 300, the 200, 100 of the But this is a goal we've had for a decade now. 2005, I think, is when I first went in. So about 25%. Hate to give up on it now. So I thought perhaps it'd be something to carry forward for the next five years and visit it again.
I think it's a good goal. I just don't know how achievable it would even be, given the consideration, the type of facilities we have here in town. That's my...
You might have some town and land.
Well, it'd be nice to see a little table showing taxable, non-taxable properties, federal properties, and state properties.
We emailed you the link to the entire...
I've seen that. That exists.
You'll have Excel spreadsheets of all the federal land, state land, private land...
Be nice to see that.
It exists, I've seen that map that you asked for. It's color-coded.
I've not seen it. It'd be nice to see that.
Okay.
You know, churches, for example, they're non-taxable.
I can send you, I'll make sure you get that link again, because it's a big document. That's why I didn't vote against it. And it has all that information, it has summary tables too, about what we have, who has jurisdiction on it. There could be some land, and we've talked about this in the past, we have that land priority report from 2009, but we actually have some land that should go to the Conservation Commission, from the jurisdiction to select them, and vice versa. You might be able to achieve some of your goals just by going to town meeting and voting to transfer jurisdiction for lands that are, say, around Cook Pond, that's a ton of lands. But it certainly makes a great sense to add to our conservation inventory. I wouldn't recommend that they go up and invent that we say, "Warrantable housing," like they did on Hyde Avenue. The recommendation would be, it should be for water resource protection under care of the Conservation Commission. So I think it's a good goal, I think we should carry on. We have this information, I'll make sure you get that link again to the entire...
Jim?
Brian, tonight we looked at a subdivision plan with six acres being... It was in what we, you know, we talked about a cluster zoning. And Policy 4 talks about doing that and counting those six, something like those six acres towards that goal. The plan we approved tonight, would that six acres in that cluster zone count?
Let's just say, for now that you approved that plan, that was an approval not required.
Right.
Private restriction. Well, let's just say for the sake of argument, those folks put a conservation restriction on that six acres.
We could ask them to do that.
You can ask them.
Well, yeah. We can't, yeah, just, we could just ask.
You can ask. Now, and if it was truly restricted, that's probably what they'd do, or some sort of other given conditions. But yeah, that land would cap, the capital you could...
Could they be encouraged because of the tax basis of the land? If it had a restriction on it, to make it worthwhile for them to do it?
Trying not to give tax advice, but the federal, the IRS does allow for certain things to happen if you allow public access. But I think they're cutting back on that restriction.
Okay, I was just trying to see how Policy 4 applied to what we did tonight, it may or may not, just from my own indication.
We try to always, well, some of the files have defended the plan. We follow, I'll see...
Different, okay, understood.
We always try to encourage them to do that.
Yep. And A and R, we can't do that.
It's an approval not required plan, it's probably one of the largest ones we've seen in years. Eight lot.
Two streets, though.
Eight lot, not subdivision.
Yeah.
Not a subdivision, even though it quacks like it, walks like it, technically not a subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
Under Goal 3, Policy 1, the land management program, what I would like to see is management of some of the town forests, like Beebe Woods. There are towns that actually manage them as a resource. There's a North Shore town, I forget the name of it now, but they have their town forest and it's managed as a forestry where if you want a pine tree milled into lumber, they will select a pine tree for you and mill it into lumber for you. It also manages the health and well-being of those resources by cutting through the brush. It helps mitigate any forest fire danger. And as a daily walker in Beebe Woods and other places around here, if we have a fire in one of those places, it's gonna look like Southern California or Northern California where you have the forest fires. So I'd like to see something added to that policy as far as land management goes, about doing a little better job of managing our forests as a resource.
The park was beautifully done by Brian.
Yes, yeah, that's a perfect example of that.
Paul?
Just to follow up on that, there was a report done on Beebe Woods about five or six years ago, and the appendix had a lot of very specific information about the flora and the fauna and so forth. And the report itself had some recommendations, particular fire breaks and things like that. It was submitted to the Conservation Commission, there was a public hearing, and I went before the board and once asked what happened to it. Nothing ever happened to it. It was one of those reports that was done by a lot of very capable people, and it's still there, but nothing was ever implemented. So I'd just like to reinforce what you're saying. I think Beebe Woods is quite a treasure and should be looked at. And people did look at it, and you may not agree with all the recommendations, but I think it's worthy of bringing it up again, discussing that. So I would endorse that.
I remember that report.
Yeah.
Nothing happened. Sorry?
So I'm sorry.
Forest management as a resource.
Okay, so serve all town on the forests and open spaces.
Yeah. Ralph?
Yeah, Brian, this is Section 8, goals and objectives. So you, the planning staff, are updating the entire open space and recreation plan, is that correct?
It's very simple, because there's only three parcels to town, so it's only 27 acres in that. So most of the inventories are...
So it was, so those inventories were brought up to date? Yeah, okay, and that's part of it. So this is really the...
Backbone.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, question question.
Okay, this is the crux of the plan?
It's the backbone of the plan for policy board like this.
Okay.
Now, we'll turn the page just one.
Goal 3, Policy 5, it says, "Map, monitor, and enforce all conservation restrictions on a regular schedule." Who does that?
Holder of conservation, so it might be the Conservation Commission holds the restriction, or the County Committee, or...
Right, the person who... Okay, so then, how do... It says, "Map, monitor, and enforce all conservation restrictions on a regular schedule." So how is that communicated to the holders of the restrictions? I mean, does a holder of the restriction receive a copy, I mean, or notice that that is one of the goals and objectives of our open space and recreation plan?
So if you go to some of the action items, the next section of the plan will have actions. So if you go to some of the action items, the next section of the plan will have actions. And I believe there's one in there, Ralph, that says to form a, on this group, take a look at all our land holdings, it's that group that would then implement policy five. It wouldn't be this board, but it's in the action items.
So there, there's an action items portion of the goals and objectives that we don't have in front of us.
Of the plan that you don't have in front of you.
Of, of the plan.
Plan. So there'd be, these are the goals and policies.
Right.
There'll be another section further on, the next section, I believe, has your action plan for year one, year two.
So it's similar to our local comprehensive plan? Okay.
It's more of a...
Pardon?
I'm sorry. It's, yes. Short answer is yes.
Right, okay. All right. And the last question is, someone pointed out to me that there seems to be, there's a possibility of a, of a confusion in that, that section eight is also referred to as chapter eight. So the words chapter and section are interspersed in the plan. Would you just take a look at that? And see, and see if that, if that was the case?
Sure. Why don't you ask that person, whoever you spotted, get us a column.
I, I think, I think they said it was on the, if you download it on the website.
Okay, I think I looked at the chapters and sections.
Chapters versus sections, to see whether or not those are intermingled. Okay, thanks.
It is a draft. There are some dingers in it.
It's a draft.
Yeah, no, I know that, but I mean, it's, I know that this is a draft, but I mean, evidently maybe there, there was a, the table of contents said chapter and the, and the head, and the, and the chapter, and the title of that section actually said section instead of chap. Just, I don't know, just a technicality.
I'll, I'll find it.
Okay, thank you.
Paul?
I think the goals are good. I like what's there and the comments I'm making and not intended to be overly critical. But as I look at, goal one is acquire open space. Goal two is to increase the number and type of recreational opportunities. And number three is maintain and expand. Seems to me maintain should be alone and expand is part of two. Am I misreading that?
It's true to maintain.
If you're expanding it, that's increase the number, aren't you?
But it's only use of the open space parcels. Sometimes we have open space parcels passive. Sometimes we would like to more have more active open space or use of the open space.
Okay. The final comment I have is on goal number two, most of the policies are nonspecific. The targeted policies, I think, are very good. Trail system and things of that sort, except for policy number two, which is construct an indoor municipal swimming pool. That's a very specific recommendation. And I'm not sure that this town is ready to build and operate and maintain a swimming pool. That might be better served by a private group like the MCA is considering, or the Aquatic Group is considering. So I just question whether the goal two should include the policy of a, of specifically constructing an indoor municipal swimming pool. I think we need one, but I'm not sure that should be a goal for the town of Thalmud to run that by itself. And I think we ought to think a little bit more about that particular one. The others are less specific. And I think the pool is needed, no question about it. But here, you're basically saying how are you going to do it? And I don't think we're there yet.
It seems more of an action item.
You're right.
Why are you reading?
Other comments?
That's enough, huh?
I don't, I mean, this is what Brian was looking for.
You asked, okay.
I honestly think this is pretty, pretty decent because, you know, we're working along some of these lines with the comprehensive plan and...
Yep.
A number of these things are being worked at by other entities in town. And that's the way it should be. So is, does anybody see anything wrong with continuing this for the plan?
No, except for the couple of comments. So maybe this one will fold together.
Yeah.
I noticed that one and I had that one on my...
Yeah.
Hold up. That's the...
I know there's active looking at it, but it's not of municipal.
I think it should be our goal.
Yeah.
Problem.
Okay. Okay, let's see.
Thank you very much.
Covenant release. I don't know what I have in here, actually. This must be it, right?
This has to be where, it's a confirmative...
Yes, yes. Yes. Can you?
Yes. For some reason, this attorney, I just need to be able to find the release at the registry of D, because we have one on file here, assigned by Mrs. Smith back in 1985, the release is full and completely, completely released the covenant and...
They can't find it.
They can't find it at the registry. They're asking for a, for a report. I can review it.
Okay, so may I have a motion?
I move that we confirm, recommend a confirmatory vote.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Okay. So we've taken care of that. No general correspondence. And so now we go towards reorganization. And, God, it's not that late.
Can I propose?
Yes, please, go ahead.
It's been an honor and privilege to serve as the recording secretary, but I would repress the board that at this time I will not accept any nomination for any other position on this board.
Thank you.
As I have a lot of outside things that are taking up my time.
Your basket is overflowing.
So I would appreciate...
So you won't consider any other position except recording secretary?
No, 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 no. I am willing to relinquish control.
He's a member of the board, but other than that, okay. So which end do you want to start on?
Bob's end where he says, uh-uh, I'm not doing it anymore.
May I have nominations for chairman, please? Everybody talk at once.
I'll nominate Pecker-Futter as chairman.
I like it so much now how it is.
Nice.
Unless you don't feel like doing it anymore.
Did you, did you nominate?
I can, I can do a second term without you guys having to vote a special thing, so long as I get some time off occasionally.
It was a nomination.
It was a nomination.
I'll second it.
Okay. Are there other nominations? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Why did you say?
You did such a good job tonight.
There is.
I thought there was going to be another nomination.
Okay. Vice chairman?
I'll nominate Jim.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for vice chair? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Clerk secretary?
Nominate Bob.
He's already, he's already declined.
I'll nominate Bob, Brian.
Okay. Paul has been nominated by, by Bob.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome aboard. Okay. What's it? I, I move that we...
Do you have to accept a nomination?
No, you don't have to.
Yeah, you do.
Okay.
Don't ever tell them.
I, we also have the planning board committee assignments.
Oh, sorry. I opened the gun.
And we can go through those really quickly if you like. Community preservation committee currently, Ralph. Do you wish to continue, Ralph?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody want to boot him off?
This is my last.
Something, is this your last, or you said?
This will be my last.
Oh, okay. And the local planning subcommittee, it's Jim and Bob and myself. And I know I'd like to continue. I think, yeah.
I'd like to continue.
Yeah, okay. So any objections to those?
Nope.
Coastal ponds management committee, Doug. You want to continue? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Any objection to Doug?
Nope.
Okay. Water quality management committee, Paul.
I'm willing to continue.
You're willing, okay. No objections?
Nope.
Okay. Economic Development Industrial Corporation, Jim.
I'm an appointed member.
I know you are.
So should somebody else be assigned?
You could have, I mean, that's...
Oh, as a representative for this board? I never thought about that.
Because Jim is a member of the board.
Yeah, he's been appointed.
And he's not a representative of this planning board.
Right.
He used to have been appointed by the...
Yeah. So...
So we could appoint someone else.
Yes, you should be appointing somebody else.
No.
Okay. Well, what, what does this mean then? That's...
It just means that you were recommended by...
I'm a liaison, but I have to be appointed. Got it? I understand.
Yeah.
We can appoint.
Okay. So we're done with that.
Okay.
Reorganized, guys. And then guess what we can do right now?
Future agenda.
Yes.
Future agenda.
Okay, we can do that.
Next meeting?
It's not on the...
Oh, it's not, is it? Sorry. Okay.
Should be.